Meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of West Warwick. Six o'clock on Monday, November fourteenth. Item number one is approval of minutes from the October fifth meeting. Is there a motion to consider or to approve the minutes?
I'll move the motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any comment, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes from the October meeting?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, public hearing. CDBG disaster recovery application. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, thank you Felix. Can you call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Item two, public hearing. CDBG disaster recovery application. Town is applying for one hundred and eighty-four thousand disaster recovery funding for the Shippee Avenue Green Infrastructure Drainage Plan. Is there anything to submit on that? Is there someone to submit that at the hearing?
Basically, it's a grant that came down from the state funding office. It's twenty-ten money.
Okay.
From the twenty-ten floods that they had left over. So, they approached several communities, one of which was rural, and we got to get out a project that's going to be in.
Okay.
So, we're applying for the balance of the funds that are left over.
Okay, great.
The town's created five hundred thousand dollars of program money to the project as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for the discussion?
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of applying for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar grant? Anyone want to speak opposed to applying for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar grant? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Motion's made, move the second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
You know, I'll entertain a motion that we approve and authorize the town to apply for the one hundred and eighty-four thousand in CDBG disaster recovery funds.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion approved, a motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I asked all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposition. Motion passes. Thank you. Now into the meat of the meeting. Okay. Item three, public information meeting. Fifty-nine Arthur Street. And this is property, the applicant is La Croix Properties. Location fifty-nine Arthur Street, assesses plat eight. Lots twenty-six, sixty-two, ninety-four, ninety-five, and a portion of Laramie Island, Jefferson Street. Zoning District Residential R seven point five, four point three two acres of land. Number of lots, four lots, being reduced to two, and the engineer is Crossman Engineering. The applicant's proposing a street abandonment. Basically, in this case, the applicant is looking to withdraw that project without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, I have marked as exhibit number one for this, the letter from Attorney Bollinger requesting that withdrawal.
Okay. And we have that? And is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm Attorney Bollinger.
Okay.
Good evening. The members of the board just here respectfully request a withdrawal of the application at this time for after reconsideration at a different time.
Okay.
At a different time. But missing consideration for that at a different time.
Okay.
If they still choose to bring it back, so at this time it will be a withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've discussed this with the town planner.
Yep.
And both he and I feel that that would be the proper action. For the board to either force a hearing, a denial would prevent anything from happening for another year. And if it were to be continued, it has to be continued over and over again to a date certain. This way, the applicant can pull the application, no prejudice, and he starts all over again whenever, when and if he's ever ready.
Is there any connection between this item and the next item on the agenda? Which is the reinstating of the Arthur Street residential cluster?
No, no.
Not connected at all?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? No further questions. Thank you. It's not a public hearing, right? So, we can vote right now? Yeah. It's not a public hearing, but is anyone interested in adding their voice to this issue?
Leo Drolet from fifty-one Arthur Street. I just wanted to.
Raise your hand, please. Say your name and address.
Leo Drolet, fifty-one Arthur Street.
Would I tell the truth before I put my question?
I do. I just wanted, because there's other people here that are involved, that we're all clear that nothing can happen with this project. It has to be restarted over again. So, we would have to be notified.
Yes.
Before this happened.
I would make sure he sounds like project.
Right.
Fifty-nine Arthur Street.
Fifty-nine Arthur Street.
A condo associate, yes.
Yeah. That was the construction of twenty-five unit residential condominium complex.
Correct.
Right. There's another hearing tonight for another parcel off of Arthur Street.
Okay.
So, you may be here for that one, which will come up next. And that's Arthur Street at the intersection of Pulaski Street. And that's for thirty units. That was previously approved in two thousand and six. And they're asked for continuation of that. So, there's two different projects. This one is being withdrawn. And if this one were to come back, it's my assumption that the neighbors would have to be ordered.
It starts all over again.
Starts all over again. So, neighbors would have to be notified.
So, this other one is the other end of Arthur Street where it goes into Pulaski Street?
Yeah. So, stick around for the next hearing, because that might be the one, the reason you're here, okay?
Yeah, it's actually, Mr. Chairman, it's actually not the reason.
No, it's not. The reason I'm here is my property is right on this other project's line.
Okay, okay, all right.
But I'll listen to the other one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this, is there a motion to approve the withdrawal of this petition?
Move the motion.
There is second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Seconded, Anthony. Yeah, Anthony, you seconded.
All those in favor of withdrawal of the project without prejudice?
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you, Attorney Bollinger.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Okay. That's, let me get that one started. Item four, public hearing. Reinstatement of an application. Arthur Street Residential Cluster. Applicant is Offshore Development LLC. It's Arthur Street at the intersection of Pulaski. Assesses plat eight. Lots five twenty-seven to five thirty-seven and five thirty-nine to five forty-nine and a portion of Arthur Street. Residential zone R seven point five, six point two acres of land, twenty-two lots going down to two. Engineer Carrigan Engineering. Applicant is requesting reinstatement of an expired master plan approval to abandon a portion of Arthur Street and to construct a thirty-unit residential condominium complex. Is there, is this a hearing? It's a public hearing? No?
No, it's a public meeting, Mr. Chairman.
It's a public meeting, okay. This is not a public hearing, but we, so we can discuss this here on the board. So, question?
Mr. Chairman, I have marked as exhibits, exhibit number one, a letter from Attorney John Bernero dated October twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, requesting the reinstatement. A copy of the December fourth, two thousand and five Planning Board Master Plan Approval and a copy of the, a site plan for the project dated March twenty-second, two thousand and five. Those are now in your, officially in the record.
Okay. And is the applicant here? I assume you are.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney Thomas Cronin filling in for John Bernero tonight.
Okay.
The, as the board is aware, this matter was first approved for master plan by the West Warwick Planning Board back in two thousand and five. It was extended a couple of times, the final extension expiring in two thousand and eight. The project ran into some serious consideration by DEM due to its proximity to the Patuxa River. There's some slopes, some drainage issues, as well as the river. As a result of those hearings and appeals, the matter did not get released or approved by DEM until October of two thousand and eight, just about on the day that the real estate market crashed, pretty much simultaneously. No further action has been taken. The DEM approval is for twenty units only. So, the reinstatement of the plan would be only for those twenty units, a less intense use than previously considered. If one were to look at the plan, the units away from the river would be developed and the units closest to the river would not be developed. Only one side of the property, one side of the road would be utilized in this manner. So, it would be twenty units, five buildings with four units in each building. You know, all of the DEM approvals are in place, so they will, of course, be followed. The reinstatement, both under Rhode Island law as well as the West Warwick ordinance, require that the new submission or the reduced submission still be, you know, in conformance with the comp plan and that the zoning regulations and land use regulations hadn't changed significantly since the approval and that the parcel of land is substantially the same and the state and federal law with regard to the regulation of the development of land substantially the same. Those things are true in this case, mostly due to the real estate bubble. You know, not much has changed in the land use regs over that time until now. So, it's a less intense use. The area along the Patuxa River would be protected. There are a couple of extra steps that, you know, still need to be undertaken. This is just step one in a path to reinstate to the master plan that was approved back in two thousand and five. Still need to go to town council for abandonment of a paper street as well as to the zoning board for the intensity of the use consistent with the land area. The, there are other stipulations with regard to water, sewer, you know, curb cut, you know, all of the usual engineering things that would be dealt with at preliminary approval. But, so essentially, we had a condo plan with just about thirty units that's being reduced to a condo plan with about twenty units, and we're going to keep those condos on the side of the road away from the river.
Okay, so this was originally granted master plan approval?
That's correct.
That's my understanding. And now, you're talking about basically going back to applying for, as you're extending it, you're still applying for preliminary coming up?
We're here today to reinstate the plan in its current master plan approval. It'll have to be amended, and I'm just informing the board how it'll be amended.
Okay.
To a less intense use.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think to put it in perspective, I think basically it's like we're back to two thousand and eight and it's happening tonight.
Yeah.
Where they were then, they are tonight, if the board approves that they are tonight. And in addition to what Attorney Thomas said, I, in discussing it with the town planner, I felt that the intent of our legislature that has continually told the statutes of, you know, it's now, I think it's up to two thousand.
Next, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. You know, that it all began with the housing problems that we've heard about, that it was their intent to do this. So, I think that you would be acting in a similar vein as the intent of the legislature to.
But, okay, I agree with that. Question I have, this is, it's a legal question. They really, they're asking to reinstate it, but they're asking to actually turn it into something different than what was submitted. They're asking, they're asking to reinstate what was approved for thirty units. Can we reinstate that when we know that they're actually planning to only put in twenty units? And I think the twenty is a better deal. That's not the point. This is a legal question.
And then, if it's a legal question, I'll let you answer that. Let me speak before. I would say technically, you're reinstating what was previously approved.
Right.
And as would happen in the process, had they proceeded along that process, had there not been an issue with the real estate market, they likely would have gone to the town council and the zoning board in getting the subsequent approval, ended up before the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management with a lesser project. That lesser project would have come back to the planning board at its preliminary approval phase, basically telling you, we're not going to do thirty, now we're going to do twenty. So, technically, in my opinion, and now you can, you can respond, you know, based on, based on your opinion also, that you are reinstating what was previously existed in its existing condition. And as they work through that process, whether it be the town council, whether it be the zoning board, that approval is subject to change based on input from those, from those two boards as well as DEM, so that ultimately, a different project could come back before the planning board. But technically, you're reinstating that project that's in front of you.
I think to put it in perspective was, if we went back in time, that the planning board had approved this.
I can't hear anything back here.
I said, I think to put it in perspective, if the planning board had, if this was back in two thousand and eight and tonight the planning board approved the thirty units, that's what you are. However, they then go out to DEM and DEM says, you can't have thirty units, you can only have twenty. You've approved thirty, they've got to go now before zoning and council and the, when they come back in for their final preliminary, preliminary and final, then they come back to you and they say, look, you gave us permission for thirty as a concept. Well, that concept, the rest of the people didn't go along with it. So, now we're coming in and we're asking you to give us twenty, twenty units, and these are the final plans. Here's the drainage, here's the curb cuts, here's all the detail. We're asking you to give us less than you originally gave us in our concept. So, I think that's the, trying to put it in a perspective.
Go ahead, Felix.
So, what type of a form of document do we need here that they're intent is to do twenty units?
No, that's not before the, that's not before the planning board tonight. Basically, all the planning board.
If he's making a representation, they're going to do less.
That's right.
Is that representation going to move forward? What do we need for documentation that they're going to do twenty units?
The fact that they're going to, they've got to go before the, they've got to come back before you.
But they could do thirty units.
Yes.
Why is the representation being made, there's going to be twenty, when they could do thirty?
Because they, as of, what I'm understanding, as a fact, while they had, in two thousand and eight, they got planning board.
Whoa, 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 wait a second. The representation started, it's going to be smaller and less at twenty. Why is it being presented that way? I just need to understand.
Sure.
Why are you doing this?
DEM. DEM has restricted the project to twenty units.
Okay.
And, as well as the placement of those units.
Does the DEM approval have, is that good forever or is that good up until a certain date?
It's good for one more year.
One more year.
That's correct.
So, if you want to do thirty units, you need DEM approval?
That's correct.
So, you may want to do thirty units. You may try to do thirty units.
No. No, this project has been restricted by DEM to twenty units.
Right. Now, on the street abandonment.
Yes.
I need to understand something about a street abandonment. If there is a property owner on one side of the street and you're on the other, it goes half, it goes halfway through the center of the street. What happens if a property owner on one side refuses to take responsibility for owning half of that, half, from the curb to the center line?
This particular paper street goes pretty much through the middle of the parcel of the property. There aren't any abutting property owners in this case.
In the case, in general, in the case you're talking about, an adjoining property owner
on a paper street that's been designated and not accepted by the town might have some use rights. If it has been designated and accepted by the town, then the town has the sole rights. You know, it depends on the legal scenario. But in this case, the paper street goes through the middle of the property.
Right. So, what we're saying here, Al, is we have a tolling statute that went into effect at a date after, in other words, they were not subject to the tolling statute.
Yes, that is correct.
Right? In other words, they were before the tolling statute.
That is correct.
Had it been another couple of years, they would have been subject to a tolling statute.
That's correct.
Of X number of years that got extended again.
Now, it's up until November, I think, November of two thousand and seventeen.
So, they missed the tolling statute by?
I don't remember the date.
Maybe a year or so, I think?
Probably about nine, eight or nine months.
Eight or nine months, yes, the tolling statute.
It would have been the July following when the legislature enacted the law.
So, the tolling statute basically considered economic conditions, it just gave people more time. But because they were eight months before, they didn't have the benefit of the tolling statute that others have.
That is correct.
So, they have to come back to us as a result?
That is, yes, that is correct.
And I'm a little confused, because some of the things that are listed now as exceptions, wouldn't they have had to been done as part of the master plan? In other words, apparently, they got a master plan approval, not a preliminary approval. So, wouldn't like the street have had to been abandoned prior to that?
No, no. The master, all the master plan did was say, you came in here with a project.
Okay.
We like the idea.
Yeah.
But before you can come back to us to give you approval to go forward with this plan, you've got to go to the town council and get the town council to abandon the street.
Yeah.
And if the town council says, okay, we're going to abandon the street, then you've got to go to the zoning board and seek whatever relief they need from the zoning board. And if the zoning board says, okay, we're going to give you that relief, then you're going to come back to us and you're going to come back to us with your drainage and your curb cuts and everything else, DEM approval, water company approval, everything in detail. And then, we'll decide whether or not we're going to let you go forward with this project.
Okay. So, they still got to come back with all of that stuff?
They got to come back with all the detail to you.
Even if we grant this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there, anyone in the audience want to weigh in on this?
Matthew Dowling, one twenty Patuxa Terrace. Matthew Dowling, one twenty Patuxa Terrace.
Swear, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. We, there's a lot of us here in the community. We're here for a different issue. We have no idea that this was even going on with this other company. There's other people in the neighborhood that I'm sure would like to be here and weigh in on this, because it's going to affect everyone in the neighborhood.
I think that, to try and answer that question, is that that opportunity, you've got at least three more hearings. It's going to go to the town council and it'll be advertised and noticed, I don't know what type of notice the town council has to give, I'm not involved with that, but that has to be done. If they get the approval from the town council to abandon this paper street, then they got to go to the zoning board. At the zoning board, everybody within the two-hundred-foot radius gets noticed as required by law and it's publicized and just like every other public hearing, you get notice for that. If they're successful with the zoning board, then it comes back here for final approval. Again, state law and town law requires a notice be given to people within two-hundred feet radius of the property lines. Now, my only suggestion is, I don't know whether you, any of you are within the two-hundred feet, but you might make those people who you know are within the two-hundred feet aware of it and have them let you know when it comes about. But you have, there's going to be three more hearings, a minimum of three more hearings. This is strictly, the hearing tonight is basically that, eight years ago, the planning board said, we like the idea. And that's all it's doing is saying, you're back to that. The planning board likes the idea. Now, go forward and with all your specifics, so the people can decide whether they really want it or not.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
State your name and address, please.
Elena Corrado, twenty-eight Kent.
Would you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Swear, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Is there some documentation we can take with us to find the plots and the land and all the stuff that's included in this?
Yeah. Yes.
And will there also be some kind of supporting data for the real, the need in the community for these, this project? Some kind of consensus as to the demand for this kind of housing?
That would be their obligation to convince the planning board at the time the planning board decides whether or not. They had, they got to zoning first, they got to convince the zoning board that what they're seeking is needed.
So, that kind of stuff will be in that?
When they come back at that time.
All right, that'd be interesting.
The obligation is on them to prove the need and all those standards.
Yeah, okay.
If you wait, I will go up and make a copy. This is, this is the two-hundred-foot abutment list from the original application. It does have the plats and lots, street addresses on it.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused where it ends.
I would tell you that some of the property owners may have.
It's been ten years.
Changed. It's been, it's been a substantial amount of time. So, I can, I can provide you with a copy of that.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that, I'm sure. There would be.
I think she's looking for the notice list. You were looking for the notice list, correct?
I'd like a lot of it, yeah.
Well, you know, if you.
I'd like to, I'd like to see.
I can give this to you now, but if you come into my office or you call and make an appointment, I would certainly share this with you.
Okay.
I also have the ability to email, email to you if you prefer an email.
Yeah, yeah. I would really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, okay.
Shall I stay here and wait? We have an absentee.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay. So, no one, no one stepping forward. I would entertain a motion to, to grant the reinstatement.
I just have one further question. If we approve it as a master plan, there is, there was the original decision, are we going to agree to all those original decisions?
They are.
And actually, there's, that's a good question, Tom, because there's a.
Can a couple of you turn yours off?
So, all you're doing is saying that that master plan is in effect. They are bound by everything that's in that master plan.
Yeah. We've added some stipulations in the planner's suggestions for this, Al, over and above the ones that were in the decision from oh-six. If you look at the list.
Just give Mark a minute, Phil.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, there's a few, there are eleven of them now, there were seven in the original decision. And I don't disagree with any of them, I just want to make sure that we're not creating any kind of legal loopholes that the developers jump through. Yeah, all right. Well, what happened, so, Mark, our question for you is.
Yes.
On your comments, right, the planning office recommendations.
Yes.
There are eleven stipulations that need to be met. On the original decision, there were only seven.
Yes.
So, there are, some have been added. Right.
So, basically, yes, you'd be reinstating this.
Reinstiting this and adding the.
And I think the, I think the other stipulations relate to zoning and planning board.
Yeah.
I mean, zoning and.
Yeah, I think the first seven match exactly.
Yeah, the first seven are.
Match exactly the ones that were there before.
And I'm just, these, you can include those as stipulations or not.
Okay.
Because they are statutory requirements, so they're, they're really superfluous.
Okay, do we have a preference? Is it legally, is it one better, one way better than the other?
Doesn't matter. They're required anyway. I personally would not add them.
Okay, just, just, we're going to go back to that original decision.
Go back to the original and let them start from that spot.
Start from that spot.
Yeah, so that would be, Mr. Chairman, that would be, I believe, one through seven.
Right, right.
Right?
Yes.
approvals.
Okay.
So they are not pertinent really to
Got it.
the decision.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the reinstatement of this master plan. Okay, thank you. This is a motion in our second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, I'm sorry, I want to vote, and all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, the motion passes. Thank you. And that's our district. Okay. Item five, public informational meeting, landmark court condominiums, applicant John Juisty and Joseph Mariah, 101 Quaker Lane, assessors plat 27, lots 163, lot 163 residential district, R8, 2.02 acres, one lot, the engineers Ocean State Planners. Is someone here to represent the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have marked exhibit number one, the application, exhibit number two, an Ocean State narrative report, exhibit number three, a letter dated September 22nd, 2016, from Duran Lou, Mr. Duran Lou, exhibit number four,
David Duran Lou, okay.
The Butters list, exhibit number five, a packet of various documents, and exhibit number six as the site plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Time is running. Okay, okay, all right. Just wondering why you're hanging around.
Yeah. I have to, with the board's permission, if I can approach.
Please.
I'm, I'm marking exhibit number seven as the green cause.
Okay.
Yes.
I apologize. This gentleman's asking if he could, if there are multiple copies of that Butters list that you produced available?
No, no, I'd have to make another list.
Okay.
You can email, I can email it to you tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
Sorry about that, my tripod was giving out on me there.
Okay.
So landmark court condominiums, 101 Quaker Lane.
Yep.
It's two acres diagonally across from the Kent County courthouse, just at the end of Ginsu Way, it's a great name for a street. Directly to the south and west of it is, is a large condominium complex. And to the north are a couple residential homes and across the street is commercial use. It's, it's two acres. We're here before tonight, the board tonight seeking master plan approval. The plan is for six buildings and 12 units of condominium with an access right off of On the first map, you might have noticed that there's an existing home and driveway, those will be removed. The first feature that I need to focus on in the presentation is the space between Quaker Lane and the property line of the property. The state in taking land for Quaker Lane got a little over enthusiastic in this area. And there is in excess of 25 feet between Quaker Lane and, and the property line after that action, it's a substantial piece of land. And that's important to us because the 12, the request for 12 units in six buildings is us, is slightly over the allowed use pursuant to the acreage. If, you know, using the exact figures of 87,000 plus square feet, divided by the 7,500 square foot requirement, you get 11.8. So as we've proposed these condominiums in duplexes, we would like to have the 12 and we would like the board to consider this, this area of land along Quaker Valley, excuse me, Quaker Lane as, you know, not, not part of our property, we're not claiming ownership of it or anything like that, but it's land that's not going to be used by anyone else, immediately adjacent, formerly part of this property until the state came along. If, if, board allow me, I'll just show you the area I'm talking about so we're all clear. So this, this 300 feet of frontage, in excess of 25 feet all the way across here, state land, the edge, even if the drain is in Quaker Lane, it's right here. So Matt, these are condominiums, I've been before, this board talking about these type of condominiums before because they're very hot in the, in the market right now. There's demand for these single level, one level condominiums. There's a garage in front, front door, there's no stairs. You know, the, you know, this, this is the, what people want right, right now, for sure. So that's the style of condominium. As you can see, it's on a cul-de-sac, it goes back towards the Hidden Valley condominiums there, turns around, comes out. There's buffer along the south and the west of 10 feet and then an additional buffer along the residential areas. And then finally along the road, 25 feet in addition to the state land before you get to, to Quaker Lane. The, is water available, sewer available, it's a condominium, so there'll be no street maintenance, no garbage pickup, no snow removal, that'll all be handled. The, the drawing as it's currently configured shows, shows a very large drainage, drainage area on the northern tip of the project. This is probably too much area, but just to be on the safe side, it was designed to contain all the water on site as this is a developed area, there's, there's not a lot of other space. The driveway for the adjacent condominium complex will go right along the southern boundary as well. So in addition to the buffer of the vegetative buffer and space behind the condominiums to the south, that's also where the entranceway is for the other condominium complex, kind of complement, they kind of complement each other in that. The condominiums themselves will be modest, about 1,500 square feet, probably a single car garage, maybe one or two additional parking spots depending on the length of that driveway as it's finished. So nothing too high over the, where we'd be requesting relief in any way from that. The set offs otherwise all fit as far as frontage, space between the buildings, space to the boundaries and things like that. The lighting would be downward lighting, kept on premises. Basically, if you look at the diagram, in front of those condominiums toward the street on which you'd be coming in and out of. There's quite a, an elevation change from Quaker Lane to where we would start to build on this property. And, and so I would, that's a, that's an approximation as where, as to where the entry is. We'll have to get a curb cut from the state and it's, it's a little bit of a, little bit of a hill and the Kent County water facilities probably be to the top, the first thing that you would hit on the left as you came in on the driveway there as well, that's, that'll be a good 30, 40 feet off the road, shouldn't interfere with anyone else's use at all.
In, in looking at the topo.
Yes.
There's a big drop off on the northern side of the property. It drops at least 20 feet in about, it looks like it's in a, maybe a 75-foot area, it drops 20 feet. So it's substantial.
It is.
And, and how do you plan, how do, how do you plan to deal with that as you develop the plan?
Well, the, the plan would call for landscaping, so landscaping's an all encompassing word that means filling it in and then grading it
Yep.
so it matches the, the adjoining property and then putting vegetation on there to hold that grade and there'd be, there would definitely be a landscape plan required here, yeah.
Actually, we asked that question.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Juisty's here.
Mr. Juisty's here.
We, we did ask that question during the pre-submission meetings and part of the response was that those, those units would likely have walkouts.
Walkout, that would, that would help.
And then there, I don't believe, and it may change, but I don't believe at that time they were proposing a retaining wall because I asked that exact same question.
Okay.
You're planning on building a retaining wall and filling this?
Yeah.
They said, no, our intention is to work with the landscape, those units there may have full basement with walkouts.
Yeah.
And then we would, we would, we would slope it down with gentle landscaping and, and, and landscape that.
A big part of it is covered because of the retention area. So you can put that at almost any elevation, that's
That's, that's right.
More concerned with in, in
Yeah.
Last building in the back.
That's a, that's a
Please state your name and address.
John Juisty.
Can I address?
505 Red Chimney Drive, Warwick Road Island.
And what is your position with the application?
The owner of the property.
Would you
Will be the owner of the property.
So tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will. I think the question would be on the lower portion of the north end, I think that was a question. Yeah, and actually, it's the one, John, the father's from the, from Quaker Lane. Yeah, that's the only That's the only unit that will be a walkout. Yeah. Because basically on the other units there
Jack Rich Stan
I'm sorry.
Hi. The northern part is the only one that we will be able to use a walkout on. All the other units will be ground level. Good, okay. And, and, and that, I don't know, so, so that big storm retention area though is going to help alleviate this problem? Yes. Because you can set that at the, at the right level to fit into the paint. The promise I made to the people at Hidden Valley, I think some of the people are here, I talked to someone, and I mentioned the fact that we're going to leave all the perimeter trees that are there now because it's loaded with trees. Yeah, yeah. And we, the people feel that's a good buffer for them. Right. So that's our plan to be sure we leave the trees, as many as possible. Okay.
How wide is the buffer between that retention pond and the property line? Looks like about 10 feet, yeah?
It's about I would say probably maybe a little bit more than that. Is the engineer right here?
David, why don't you come up to the mic and I'll
Take your name and address.
David Duran Lou, Ocean State Planners.
Raise your right hand. So tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I've seen you, you testified in many occasions
Yes.
before zoning boards on our state level.
Yes.
And how long have you been with Ocean State?
Seventeen years.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that he be accepted as an expert.
Do we need to take a vote on that? No, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Spell your last name for me, sir.
D U R A N L E A U. I did a little bit of calculations this, this afternoon based on this, for this project for the square footage requirement to make the 12th unit.
Yeah.
And it comes out to just a little over 2, 2,000 square feet, which divided up over the frontage of that lot, comes out to about six, a little over six and a half, six foot nine inches, something like that.
Okay.
Which is the shaded area that I, that I actually have on that plan, it's not on your plans.
Okay.
It was done this afternoon. And I did a calculation for the density, which is also on that plan, which I can send PDFs or whatever to the, to the, to the board tomorrow.
You can send them to the planner.
Yeah, I can send that.
Yeah.
Did you? Okay, yeah.
Okay.
The question
Any other questions? It was about, had to do, yeah, the question had to do with the retention area.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the detention pond to the north on the property, it's, it's oversized, we, I pretty much just delineated an area to use as drainage.
Yeah.
The engineering hasn't been done yet.
Okay.
I haven't spoken with the engineer about it. We may investigate actually putting it under the roadway if that's possible. There's other options available which may allow us to preserve that area.
Okay.
It's just in case we needed it, I wanted it shown on the plans that, that it was set aside.
Mr. Chairman, may, so not, not to speak for the person that asked the question, but I think their concern was the distance, the maximum distance or the minimum distance from that retention pond as it's on that plan to that site property line. I think that was the actual question.
Yeah, it's approximately 10 feet.
10 feet, okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a dash line here, this building setback
Yes.
line, which I assume is a 10-foot side yard setback, and it's a little more than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, that's the, okay. So if, if, if we decide to, basically, we're going to make the recommendation to the zoning board on this.
You're going to say you like the concept.
Yeah, right, and the concept, and then you've got to go to the zoning board. Okay. And then you're going to come back to us with, with your site plans.
Yes.
If the zoning board approves, okay. Okay, I don't have any more questions in bales. Yep, Felix, go ahead.
Mark, on the, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the technical review, some technical review minutes. And there's reference in here in the third paragraph about each, about Mr. Bizera reviewed the driveway access informing the committee that the drive would be 24 feet in width to accommodate two-way travel. And there's a comment about the cul-de-sac would be, would be 40-foot paved radius to accommodate fire. But it looks like on page, on sheet three, am I correct that he's showing a 45-foot radius?
Yes.
What do we, we, we're going back to the 45-40 discussion now, what do we need here?
So, so that you understand, if this was a town road
Yeah.
the requirement's 50-foot radius, and as part of that 50-foot radius, there's a 10-foot sidewalk area. So the actual paved radius
Yeah.
the town road is 40 feet. So the minimum requirement is 40 feet. They are proposing 45 feet, which is a little bit larger than the minimum requirement, which is more than sufficient for fire apparatus.
Paved radius?
Paved, yes. Because this is a driveway and it is not a town road, there is no sidewalk area, this is all owned by the association, so that the paved area is the paved area and there is no, that is the right of way. So they're paving the whole radius.
All right, so looking, looking, looking further at the minutes, there's a comment on here about DPW Director Lombardi mentioning Hidden Valley was experiencing drainage issues.
Correct.
Mr. Bizera stated he would take a look at the condition.
Correct. There's that, there, Mr. Lombardi pointed out the fact that at the intersection of Quaker Lane and the access road to the condo, the adjacent condominium development, there was some puddling that was happening there. And some of that conversation was, as part of the design of this property, would they look at perhaps helping to resolve that issue? Mr. Bizera said he would look at it and if there was a way that they could help to resolve that, that they would as part of this development project. It's not, it's not directly related to this.
So there's no definite, there's no definite answer on this?
There is no definite answer on that, it's really not associated with this development, it was something that was brought up about the adjacent property, hey, there's a problem there, do you think you could maybe help us resolve that? And Mr. Bizera said, I'll look into it if there's a way that we can help, whether it be through grading or, you know, putting a swale in or something like that, that they would, they would look at doing that.
Excuse me, on one of the site visits we made shortly after that meeting, there, there is a cul-de-sac that goes under the roadway right here.
Yeah.
If you look at the grading on this, at the southeast corner, it is, there is a depression there which directs that flow onto Trellis Drive to the weapons on the other side. So, you know, there was, there was some concern about our property possibly creating a storm and issue.
Adding, adding water.
But it looks like any, any water that would come off that portion of the property would be directed through that cul-de-sac, through that culvert and to the weapons on the other side.
Did you have a question?
Come up, come up and take my
Come on, get him sworn in. He cut you, I thought it was
My name is Dennis Souza, head of 129 Trellis Drive and president of Hidden Valley Condom Association.
Would you raise your right hand, so I tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Yes, I've been in, and I've talked to Pat Serper and, and with Mr. Bobis with the state on the drainage problem we're having. What the problem is, when it comes down from the top of that hill, and that's a big hill, it is moving at a pretty good rate of speed and it doesn't go past Trellis Drive. And when it comes in, it, it tears up our road, it's coming at such a force and it goes through the road and drains downward. It doesn't, it doesn't all go into that section you were talking about, it goes the other way. And they said they had to wait for an engineer to look at it. But what I'm concerned is, how far is the entrance road from our entrance road right now? What's the distance from that, from Trellis Drive to your entrance road? What's the distance from that, from Trellis Drive to your entrance road?
Just about.
Because we have a hundred and twenty units, so there's a lot of traffic there already. And it's a very tricky spot coming in and out of. Anybody that travels through there.
About a hundred feet?
About a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty feet.
Okay, she's going to be down the hill quite a bit.
Downhill, yeah.
So, this problem has to be resolved for us. If our, our, we're going to get it resolved one way or the other. We can't have that water rushing in. It's caused premature, premature damage to our roads and our sewer system, drainage system. So, eventually that water is going to go, is going to go past our street. That's what I'm trying to, so they'll be aware of that. All that water, and it is considerable, it is considerable, is going to end up going there. So, they're going to have to find a way to be sure it goes past and into the, the big gully that there's a, the gigantic gully there.
Down at the bottom of the hill.
Yes, there is. I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to figure out. I hate to say it, you know.
Hidden Valley's only in seventy-three Quaker Lane.
Yeah, it needs to go all the way down, true. No, it really does.
Yeah.
Because it's cost us money. It's cost us to have to do stuff that we're not, isn't part of our budget. We've had to go and dip in our budget to fix stuff that should be lasting. So, again, and then also, how high are the buildings exactly going to be? Are they, do you have a footage?
One story.
Okay.
Yeah, they're single story, yes. Four point eight.
Okay, so it won't be nothing that high?
No.
Then you're going to have three buildings above it to our, our entranceway or that's where, was that what it would look like?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're going to keep, now, is there, the ten foot, let's say, I know you're saying ten foot. So, what is that, say, say from Hidden Valley's road, where our road goes in, what is the exact distance from the edge of our road to, let's say, the edge, the, the back of the buildings that's going to be there, the condos themselves? So, you have a better idea what the distance is.
Trellis Drive kind of runs at an angle.
Yes, little slight angle, yes.
So, at its closest, it looks like it's forty feet away.
Okay.
And, and goes to probably closer to seventy.
And I, I do agree that you were talking to somebody about making sure the trees stay as much as possible. Yeah, we have no problem with that. It was just, I, I just wanted to make aware of that. There is a drainage problem there and if we get it fixed, they're going to be aware of it too as well because it could affect them.
Yep.
So, that's, that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
I hope anybody else has questions.
Thank you. Any other comments that people want to add?
Please right hand. State your name and address, please.
Mike DeShantis, seventy-seven Quaker Lane.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
On your Boy Scout honor?
Boy Scout honor. Eagle.
Eagle Scout?
Eagle Scout.
Okay.
That used to be my playground. All of Hidden Valley. Grew up there and that helps sound all right. Question I have is you're taking down the old farmhouse, right? That's going to disappear.
That's right.
And the road is going to be north of where the old farmhouse is.
Yeah.
If you've got those homes in there.
Yeah.
Now, you're moving that driveway approximately a hundred feet. Has anyone looked to see that when cars go pull out that driveway, they can't see because that's the crown of the hill?
No.
Creating it. And you've got that driveway coming out and then Hidden Valley's driveway is about a hundred feet away and Ginsu is right across the street, in between the two.
Yeah, this is between the two.
Uh, you know, that's, I see a, I see a, an accident problem there because no visibility. Right. You're not going, I think that if the driveway were, where the existing driveway is, it wouldn't be as bad. But to move that, to move that new driveway or new road in, down a hundred feet, could really create a safety problem for those people pulling out because you can't see. I mean, I live down, our driveway's down and we've got a good view when the brush is cut. We've got a good view of people coming up. But you, that driveway's going to be right after the crown of the hill and I see that as being a problem. And we're just concerned about the drainage because I'm not down there, but her house is there on seventy-three, the first house to the right.
It has had a dry cellar for thirty years. I don't want one.
So, I, I mean, they're going to put in a big retention, right? Right, so they're going to put in a big retention.
You don't want an indoor swimming pool in your basin, huh?
No.
But, but I heard that that retention basin might not be a retention basin there.
Right, they're thinking about burying, somebody said they're burying it under the highway, under the driveway.
How do you bury?
Underneath the roadway.
How do you bury that under the?
Put in chambers and, and then.
So, I mean, there will be more meetings, right?
Oh, yeah, that, those specifics are going to come after zoning, when you come back here to get master plan approval, correct?
Preliminary plan approval.
The preliminary approval, yes.
Yeah, I don't, excuse me, I, I really don't have too much of a problem with the retention basin, the way they've got it drawn.
Yeah.
But that's not necessarily how it's going to be.
Right, that's right. They haven't done the engineering yet.
I was just saying all trees like between my house, oh, sorry.
State your name and address, please.
Joyce Nelson, seventy-three Quaker Lane.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
The, the area between my house and there, what you show is a retention. Is this going to stay all tree, all woods like it is?
We can't touch any of your property.
On mine, and that is to show more.
Correct.
And then there's going to be more on the other side of the wall.
We'll preserve as much as we can. Like I said, the drainage is only designed for those ties to what we, what we're into the painting.
Yes, it's going to zone.
So, whatever we don't use will keep us natural.
We're going to recommend to zone it. That's what we're going to do.
Safety issue. There's really no taxes.
Works for me.
Yeah, let's see what he wants to say. Okay. Oh, one more, a couple more?
Oh, okay.
Come on up.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Jean Gataigno and I live at seventy-five Trellis Drive in Hidden Valley.
Would you raise your right hand?
Please?
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay. I'm just to reiterate what's already been said, but really to go on to the record, I have maybe three comments. One is that because the housing along our drive going into our development is so close to our road, I would prefer that additional trees and shrubs be placed to create a more dense barrier. The traffic, I don't know that you, you are familiar with that corner, but we have the courthouse, we have the social security department, we have a medical building, we have an apartment complex, we have Hidden Valley, we have a dental office, all coming to that one T area, Ginsu Way, our driveway and the property next to us. I don't know how to solve that problem because even without this development, it is very dangerous. People come up the hill speeding, they come down the hill speeding, and when court's in session, between eight-thirty, people trying to get to work late and everybody getting into the courthouse, it's just one car after another. Maybe there needs to be a consideration of putting some stop signs on Quaker Lane to stop the speeding coming down, stop the speeding coming up in order to take care of that additional traffic. But when people say that traffic is a problem there, it really is a problem. And then thirdly, my comment is, is that if the property is not zoned for twelve, do not put twelve there. You have rules and regulations for some reason. So, do not, do not void out that regulation to put twelve there. I know it has to do with money, but it's also our quality of life, the people who live in that community. And we already deal with court, social security, medical buildings, Ginsu Way, a cut, a cut through from Centerville to Walter Road. We have it all there right now. So, please, only build what that property is made for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And you're finally going to get your shot. And you've been raising your hand patiently since we started.
Save the best for last.
State your name and address.
Dan Shea, fifty-five Trellis Drive.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
On my scout honor. Okay.
Eagle Scout?
Huh? Yes, I was the white scout, go and, go and become an eagle scout. I'm, I'm working with you.
Almost.
Almost, almost made it.
You can still go for it.
Yep. One of the problems you have is Quaker Lane is pitched the wrong way. Instead of the water flowing down so it doesn't come on our property and pitching it the other way, which we understood when they redid Quaker Lane, they were going to change, they didn't do it. The second thing is they've got an illegal drain on Quaker Lane that drains water off a state road onto Trellis Complex, which is a problem. It shouldn't be there because they're filling up and creating a, what I'll call a small quagmire on the Trellis Drive property right across the street from the state house. And that shouldn't be there. The third thing, and I agree with everyone here, traffic is a problem. It's a problem in the morning, afternoon and evening. And speed is a factor, as you people know at your place and everyone else here knows. It's a disaster and there's going to be problems in trying to access and egress our property. I would like you to give that all consideration. I know this is only preliminary, but I think it's important that there's a number of residents involved here. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And ladies, have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone. The, I have a question for the planner or for the attorney. Basically, we, we're going to recommend to the zoning board to approve, we're going to vote to recommend that the zoning board approve this, basically. I'm, you know, it may not be exactly what it said, but, but can, can we in that, say we have a couple of concerns, we want to make sure that they address traffic issues, that they address the water issues that the people are mentioning.
Yes, the town planner has given you a set of stipulations. In my, as a matter of fact, in my report.
Yeah.
I brought in one of the town planners' requests that I want that any and all legal documents, condominium, all doc, all documents of any length be reviewed by me prior to any submission.
Okay. So, so, so should, we should vote on all these planning office recommendations?
Yes.
As part of this motion?
As part of, if you vote, if you vote to approve the master plan, those should be stipulations that the town planner has suggested to you.
Okay.
Should be attached to that affirmative vote.
Okay.
I believe, Mr. Cronin, you have a copy of the planning board's recommendation, planning department's recommendation.
It's in the, it's in the.
I think stipulation number two addresses the traffic directly.
Yep, yep, good.
Yes, I do have them, yes.
Yeah, and I, I don't imagine there's any objection to those?
No.
Okay.
The number thirteen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, it's a pretty extensive list. You've looked at them and you're okay?
Yes.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Not to belabor the thirty and forty-five issue, but you did, you did recommend, assuming I'm looking at the right document here, you did, you did, you did comment the proposed cul-de-sac has a forty-five foot paved, paved radius.
Yep.
So, is it going to be forty-five?
It's going to be forty-five, that's correct.
Even though Ocean State said in the, in their comments it was going to be forty?
I think that might explain it would be consistent forty. It is forty-five, it is forty-five on the plan.
It's forty-five on the plan.
So, I think that, that while that may be verbatim what they said, they may have spoken error.
Yeah.
Felix, so I apologize for that, but the plan does show forty-five and it is forty-five.
Yeah.
And there was an extensive conversation about that, so.
I'm just not certain of this safety issue that the residents raised.
As far as the traffic goes?
Yeah, what happens if they can't come to resolution?
So, here's, here's what's required, okay? It is required that they hire a professional engineer who has a background in traffic analysis, that, that person goes out and analyzes this site for safety, speed, access, public safety, and if they cannot come up with a resolution, the project can't proceed. They need to come up, if, first they need to find there is a problem. If there is a problem, then they need to resolve the problem. They talk about site, site distances, speeds, they do an analysis to do a traffic count,